So the first thing is review of gas powered leave blowers. I think this was a, I think this came from an email that we were kind of reading what exactly they said. I think this is not kind of part two, which is the greater, do we want to simplify these? Do we want to change them? Do we want to match the owners? It's in the case things and doubts fair review, which I actually think there is some benefit to having a standard group of laws along with river towns. My friends at Eric Towns said they were happy with that one if we matched their laws. So we actually will take, I haven't looked at their law in a long time. I haven't looked at theirs since we passed ours three years ago, four years ago. So I think that's something to do. I've looked at the owners once, but I haven't looked at our town. Maybe it makes more sense just to take theirs because we've never really compared ourselves to the owners before. But I think case things like them because they're very simple, straightforward. But these things basically said, you know, they might get pushed back because they're kind of taking a step back and making it more convenient for gas blowers.
More convenient?
Slightly more convenient, they said. I think it's just, you know what it is? It's just the timing. I think that the full ban is surely by like two weeks, three months, two weeks on each end. That's a discussion for another day, but I think we just want to go through these and see, you know, kind of review where our law is right now. I think we're going directly from law.
Yeah.
I thought you were going to add on the second half of that, but that's all right. We can do it later. I thought we were going to have a beyond political discussion.
I actually kind of wanted to wait to do that just to have Mary Ann here.
Oh, right. Okay.
And tell us, you know, what isn't good or what is good in her legal opinion.
Okay. Well, I wasn't bringing Mary Ann in on this discussion until, until I had a sense of where the board wants to go with this, basically. So what gave rise to the work session was essentially the contention that because the decibel level, the rated decibel level that's written into the law here, and that's kind of this last sentence of the first section of this summary that's here, that the up 65 dB A or less, that essentially that effectively eliminates their use entirely because there are no units that are 65 dB A or less.
Gas units.
Gas units, yeah. So if, so if, if that's the case, and I'm not saying whether it is or not, I'm not an expert in this, but if that's the case, then this effectively prohibits their use, is that what you wanted? Because I don't believe that was originally the intent when you adopted it. It was, the intent was to allow people to transition over to less noisy units, but that the units actually existed.
That wasn't mine.
Okay.
My thought process was we were going to go to a point that they would be banned.
Gas.
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you stick up, Larry?
My thought process was that we, a point where, where gas units would be banned.
But not at this point?
No, once we got to this 65 decimal, once we got to this December 31st, 2018 date, that that was going to effectively ban gas leaf blowers.
The interesting thing is my old Google, which again got us in trouble when we see hotels. I think it's, I don't know if it's Burlington, Vermont, but they have a 65 decimal machinery list, and they have a list of models that are blowers, 65 below this, a couple out of 64. But, and it says it's not a comprehensive list, but it's a, there's, there's at least several different brands. But I'm not sure if this is, these are gas. I have to look at them.
Is there a shop or a shop?
Yeah. Model VR 500, backpack gas commercial caller, five, that's, with you and I, high on battery rechargeable. Then there's the VG 66, which is handheld gas. Then there's the VG 61, which is cord electric, and BG 71, which is electric also. There's no low noise vacuum ultras at this time. But I guess I sent us a link for this. But again, I don't know the source other than Google got me.
So taking off from what Dr. Longy just said, I, I had in my mind that we had a sunset part of this, and that that would be the transition, as you said, that there would be a transition period. And then we reach it, and then basically it's time for everybody to have made the switchover, and then, then, I don't know, that's kind of was in my head.
I mean, you know, after the year and a half of the existing law, why an individual property owner would need to use a gas leaf blower, even if it's just to clear office thick? Why should there be an exception, that kind of exception? Just like, I guess those should be eliminated, and especially from light wing duty like that. Electrically blowers are there.
So is it? Well, here's what my concern is, and why I think we need a transition period, we need to do, and I think the last time we discussed this as a group, we said we would do some exploration and working with the existing contractors. For a lot of the small guys, this is their livelihood, and they're not going to be able to go and recharge electric blowers, you know, three times a day. And if they're trying to clean off 10 properties in one day, that's, that's, that's a big deal. So what equipment they had, because I believe at one point we said that this equipment has to be replaced fairly regularly, no matter what. So if they can replace it, they're going to replace it with electric, but how is it, how is it going to work? And I see no downside, but only upside to getting information from the people who actually have to use them, and figure out how they're going to, how, how, what kind of transition is reasonable for their businesses. But I think this is another one of those many, many issues before us where it's not, there's a good side and a bad side, but there's two, there's two worthwhile goals here. But I do think people's livelihoods is a concern. And there are a couple of ways of addressing that. One is that any homeowner can do what Brian has described he does with his landscaping, which is say, you don't need to chase that relief, it's okay. Or people can buy their own electric leaf blowers, you know, and have them tell their landscapers, please use this in your area. But I do think we should take, we have a list of the registered people. We said, who have noticed that? And now we're in the downtime. Now for the next couple of months, we shouldn't be hearing any blowers. So let's take this opportunity to find out what, how many of these companies are, where they are, what they own, what they're considering replacing, what the hardship would be, and just see if we can come up with a policy that is both environmentally responsible, but also considerate of the livelihood of the owner and the job.
Larry, how many landscapers are registered with the village?
I think it's a 27, for some reason that's.
It's, it's in the 30 range, yeah. Upper 20 range, something like that. The list you have is permits, that doesn't really count them all. It overcounts.
I would have to count the individual.
Yeah.
So right now.
It's in that range.
Joe Ricino I know is starting to look, trying to get information here. He's, in terms of, he's been asked to consider using the electric leaf blowers for the parks department. And I know that your concern, since you're in the room, your concern is whether or not there isn't anything that can meet the requirements of what you need to get the job done from a day-to-day basis. And so you are doing some research on that right now.
We are. We're, we're looking to, the first purchases we make will be used at the nature center because it's a smaller scale, we'll be able to see their effectiveness. I've yet to find anything that I think would be efficient to use in any of the larger parks. And because of batteries, because of the batteries, because of the power. I do think that I've narrowed down, and I like the company STIHL still. They seem to have different levels of machines, you know, backyard, kind of big, and then something like us. And so we're going to give it a shot, you know, we're going to, we're going to see how effective it is. If it works out, if it looks like they last, if the batteries aren't a problem, we would continue as we move forward to maybe upgrade using them in other parks. But I, I thought it would be a nice message for the Ohio Nature Center to try to, you know, get moving on it. And since we had some money to buy equipment, we figured this was a good time.
The reason I mentioned that was because we really have hands-on experience with the electric equipment.
And that'll be a good pilot, you know, that we have, you know, like our department will be, you know, it doesn't work, if it does, it doesn't work. But if it does work, then we can say, here's the exact models we tried, this one wasn't good, these two seem to be good, be your end of whatever.
That would be helpful, to have us being like any things, to figure out what are the most efficient models, rather than expecting these small guys to go buy some.
Have lots of batteries.
So, but I, but I think we can, we can give this, we have now for the next few months, we're going to be, you know, mill blowers. So let's see what information we can get, how for the, because the research I did, it was up to the trade of efficiency. And that might not matter a lot for people just doing people's front lawns. But again, how is this transition going to be made over what period of time? I think we need to hear from the people who work here too.
So just speak to that. And I, I have, you know, I have a lot of concerns too. So I guess this is a question. When they came and got their registration, I guess we call it, to work in Irvington, they then knew what our law was, right? And that it was going to sunset, and that it was expected that this was a transition time.
I don't think, I don't think it actually sunsetted, that's the thing.
Well, what was the thing?
The piece that sunsetted was for the multifamily, and I thought you gave them extra time and that piece, and I thought it was.
That was, that was a false sunset, that's right. But, but the, what also changed on December 31st was the.
Was the noise level from 70 down to 65.
Correct.
So I guess what I.
So Connie, I know what you're getting at. I think it may not be a bad idea if we now, in this interim period that Janice is talking about, say, reminding the 27 or so registered people, that as of right now, they need to be operating, they should understand that they're not there in violation, and that we're considering, you know, further changes going forward, and we'd like to hear from them. But that they should be aware, because they may not be, that it changed to 65. And certainly, you know, anybody that is looking to purchase new equipment.
Yes, well, sure. Be sure.
And I don't think that we can assume that they know that right now.
Right. And I'm not sure that they actually are measuring their own, you know, decibel level.
It's not much a measuring. The equipment comes with a, it's with a number.
So the guy takes the things out of the back of the truck, and I'm not sure, need to reading their, not saying it should.
I think if they might, I think if they might knew, they.
It's different. That's absolutely different. But I think it might take some information gathering and some education to get everybody on the same decibel level. Because, you know, just look at the people.
Well, the other thing is, I think we have to be, I'm agreeing with both of you by saying, I think the village has to be proactive. Like, it's not enough just to say, here are this year's regulations. I think you do have to say, you know, flashing letters. And by the way, notice the DB limit, because that's effectively making a lot of equipment no longer legal for use. So in other words, a proactive pointer at the fact that this is happening, not just basically assuming that as they're reading through it, they're going to go, oh, that's my equipment. You know what I mean?
So I see, yeah.
The way people are, they're not going to be reading it at that level of introspection or whatever.
They're going to be, exactly. They're going to be looking more at, when can I, I'm not allowed to use blowers, but neither is any of the other guys, right? But if they are going to have to, we have an expectation that they have to replace equipment with quieter equipment, I think we need to reach out to them, see what kind of a hardship this might be, see how many blowers that they need. And the other thing, then I think this is real, and I, this is not my field, so I'm just, you know, but these things have to be charged. You know, the way it operates now, these guys put their blowers on their truck and they go from lawn to lawn. I don't know how long a charge these things hold. There's certainly not much, what?
Well, I don't know. I just plug them, I've seen them plugged in to, you know, you plug into your outdoor thing when you get to that.
Okay, that may be, yeah.
You don't walk around cabled on, you know, on a power cord. What happens is a number of batteries to back up. Because it's like, depending on the power you're using, it's like, what you read in the literature, it's 90 minutes to maybe two hours at best with a backpack unit. But you can get replacement batteries, or you can get multiple backpacks, right?
Or you plug in at the place where you go.
Do it with a cord.
Again, so we don't, we don't know what the real impact in terms of cost of the transition will be to the people who depend on the equipment they earn.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying that we need to point out to them that in fact, they have to consider the fact that their existing equipment may no longer conform.
Okay. And then, and then, so I think if we have some information for them about what are efficient models, if we have some, if we are, if we can talk to people and work with them about what kind, how long it takes to replace, but to some of these, and I'm not comfortable with that. I'm perfectly comfortable with the long-range goal. I think we need to, we need to figure out how we can make it work well.
But I have two other, more, I don't want to say global, but jackal issues, one's global and one's very specific. We have an exception to push behind blowers. And those things are operating really loudly at 90 to 100 decibels. And that's an exception. So what we're going to have happening is that people could start bringing those in to small properties. I mean, they already do in some cases. They have a blower guy to walk behind and a couple guys with handhelds. So.
Hey, when you said we have an exception, you said that that's, that they're allowed?
I thought they were not allowed.
No, no, no.
By the noise level. I'm not saying that they're allowed by the window of exclusion.
I thought we specifically said that push, push the blowers were not allowed.
Has to be greater than.
Greater than a half acre.
Right.
On greater than a half acre.
And there's no decimal, Larry pointed that out to me when I was asking the same question. There's no decibels limit on the push behinds.
That's true.
So it's really kind of, what I'm really worried about is actually everyone who looked using that equipment primarily.
Well, that's another perfectly good reason to get in touch with these guys and say, look, this is what we're trying to accomplish here. We're concerned about the decibel levels. We're concerned about the environmental impact. Talk to us. What, what, how do you envision making this transition?
So the other issue that, to me, that's very, more global is that what's noticeably different between what we have and what the owners have is, amongst other things, is we have a lot of specific exceptions written in our law. So it's not simply, here's a window of time that's red on the calendar and go away. Instead, it's like, yeah, but unless you're so-and-so, or this condition, or that condition, and all these kinds of things, you can get written automatically, you have, you know, do not go to jail kind of pass in the law. Whereas what the owners seem to do is they seem to require specific exclusion permits, I don't know what they were, permits for use, that to be asked and to be paid for on a case-by-case basis, that would give them the ability to use it, use other equipment inside, inside the exclusion window. So, you know, that creates a much simpler regulation, but I don't know that it makes it easier for like the administration of it.
Again, I'll, you know, maybe I'm being unreasonable, but my view of a lot of the exceptions that we came up with, private homeowners for their backyards, multifamily housing units, that said they have to be able to clear things off on their sidewalks, and they were all limited to the first year and a half of our law. And they were being served with a notice that going forward, you're not going to have that exception. But that's not in the, that's not how it's written. Well, it's written by limiting them to 65 decibels. And if they can't meet 65 decibels, then they've got to use a battery operator. And I'm not averse to changing that now, you know, with, with notification. But notification can be as of September 1st or whatever the next window is for.
September 1st, because of the 15, you can tell on the first.
Well, I would tell them tomorrow, not tomorrow, but I would tell them as soon as possible, that you have three months to understand that we passed this law a year and a half ago, and that the purpose of passing this law was so that you would be needing these new regulations. I mean, that was my thought process. I was perfectly happy a year and a half ago, the card out of exception for somebody, for a private homeowner, and for the people in Half Moon, and for all these different people. But they don't get exceptions forever. I mean, they, they have to fall into the rules that we're going to try to make to simplify the rules. I mean, anyone who looks at our rules, they can understand them anyway.
They're not that complicated, but they are, it's hard. It was really kind of filled with exceptions.
We're trying to make everybody happy, right?
And I wasn't averse to that, with the understanding that we're making you happy today, and then as of December 31st, 2018, you need to make us happy. You know, you need to follow the rule, that was said.
So what if we created, I don't, I don't know how it works to get in touch with these folks. I mean, you have their address. They don't like come into village hall all the time. They came in once, right? So if we want to communicate with them and get some information and give some information, how, how would that happen?
We have all their contact information.
So it would be like a letter?
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay. All right. See, I have a letter that we create that says something about this last 18 months was viewed as a, as a transition, and that we are, we're, it's, I don't know what, we're, we, it's, we're expecting, or it's certainly in the cards to totally disallow the gas-powered blowers. And we'd like to get their feedback on how much that's, you know, what they have now. You know, they've had some period of transition, they're months in the summer for more transition, and to communicate with us so that, you know, they, they can speak about how much of a hardship it is.
I think we need to make that letter very carefully worded, so it doesn't give them a feeling to say, I can't do anything different than use my gas.
Yeah, right, right. Because by saying, this is the direct, this is what you expect. This thing's, this happened every 18 months. This is the direction you should expect to face, you know, most of the river towns. And with that in mind, you know, we're forming you, but we'd like to communicate with us. I don't know if it's in the question there.
The rest of the river towns have, have DB limits, do they? That is, I mean, the owners want to tap against the law.
I think, look, we, we among ourselves weren't entirely clear what this law was eliminating and doing. That the DB level that we built into this, you know, I certainly, there was no, no, this was when this was adopted, to the people who are registered landscapers. But Larry, tell me if I'm wrong here, that we gave this to them, but there was no education process to say, this means that, you know, the, the decibel level of a gas-powered leaf blower is going to be prohibited in here. I don't think that was clear. And it wasn't entirely clear among ourselves either.
I think it was clear, we would have sent them a letter. But if we, if we want to send them a letter just to remind them that this law goes into, that goes into effect on September 15th. If you're not 15 dBs or less, you can't use a gasket.
So that would be.
And then we say, you can make sure you have the documentation from the manufacturer. So it's not our police going out with their monitors.
Right.
It's going, okay, this is the steel 207C. Here's your, here's the specifications. It's 64 decibels. Carry on.
So, again, though, I think we have to be somewhat attuned to the fact that we have people who depend on their livelihood on doing lawns, and they have, have equipment of various ages. And it's one thing to say, we're going forward, you can have to replace, you can't use this. I know the problems that you can't use these, but there can be, I think, a period where a replacement, a time in which it can be replaced. I have no idea, I have no rough idea what they, what the units cost, but what this means for a six guy crew. Many of them have already done it.
I don't think so.
What?
I mean, I think.
There's very few, I don't think, blowers used right now as far as I can.
Yeah, I got to see Danny. I mean, I, I think we can put it something, whose content, who's comments or concerns, or something like that.
But I would.
Come talk to Bryn. She likes to talk about blowers.
But that's sort of like, doesn't, doesn't address the issue. If we talked to us, if you had any questions and the concern, and the concern is, I have, you know, I'm a four person operation, I have four gas leaf blowers. I drop two guys off at one place, I drop two guys off at the other place. If you're telling them I can only use electric, okay, when I need to replace things, but these are only like a year and a half old. I bought them just before you guys changed the law. Are you really willing to say tough?
Yeah.
If it means that these people, this, this, again, this is people's livelihood.
So we won't know if it matches the case until.
So we, so we can ask them.
But the bad is.
What are you using? What equipment are you using? When, what is?
I do think we're anticipating the problem. Like, they might not know anything, and that's just.
Well, no one said anything already, because it's not, they're not aware of it. It's clearly didn't register. I guarantee it, people didn't register, people. We were surprised what that decibel level implied when we did some tests in here, remember? We're going, oh, that's that much. So, or that's whatever. So I'm, I'm sure they don't know.
Because there are, there are electric ones that are higher than 65.
Well, it depends on, on all of them, depends on draw and rate at the time that they're using it. But the other thing I want to point out, and this is just a counterbalance, is you know, in terms of regulatory stuff, we also have to look at that we've been receiving an overwhelming number of complaints from residents. So it's just not the small businesses we should be concerned about. It has to be about the quality of life and the, and the health implications that have been brought up to us as well. So that counterbalance is a little bit of, I don't have as much crocodile tears for the small businesses. I'm sorry, Janice, I, I understand your point, and they do have to be able to have a reasonable tweak, you know, based on first becoming conscious of the issue, and then planning for what that means for their business. But at some point, I really do think that the health and wellbeing of the residents of the village has to take precedence, it can sometimes, right?
I, I don't disagree. I started out by saying I don't disagree that we should transition to electric leaf blowers. But we've all agreed that this, and I, you know, we say it yet again, that the way this was written, the way it was promulgated, probably nobody quite got the part about this one line at the bottom about the decibel level meant in effect no gas leaf, leaf blowers. And we were even surprised.
Well, here's, here's my compromise. If we get, if we send out to the 27 people and seven of them say, this is, you know, I had no idea, this is going to put me out of business. We say, okay, you know what? For the next, for the fall cleanup, you're okay. I appreciate you to the end of the year, and that's not until the following, you know, June or following March.
We heard that it's about a two-year life.
So that's, that's two years. So if we, if we want to have, you know, we'll, we'll say, okay, folks, you have, you have one more cleanup. You know, I think we send out the letters now and say, hey, by the way, as of the September 15 cleanup, you got to be 65 decibels or less, where you can't use gas.
Right.
Please let us know if you have any questions or concerns. Take it back and say, you're putting us out of business. Okay, okay. You have, you have one more cleanup. Now we've given you the full two years.
But I would even be a little bit careful about relying or making a link to a specific decibel level. Honestly, if they've been using the same gas blower for like three years, they probably don't even know what decibel level.
These are all older.
Yeah. But I just want to say, this is, this is where we're going. We want to move towards quieter equipment, which means in effect electric, because I don't think that was clear when we adopted this law.
Well, it's not, you said, you said if it's gas, you can have, you can use any, you can have electric, that's 400 decibels, we don't care for our law. But, you know, this is saying that for the gas, it's got to be 65.
Right. Which, and I'm saying they may not even know. So at this point, it's, I think it's, we need to let them know and ask them what equipment they have, what their plan is to transition to the quieter.
I don't think we have to, I don't, I don't think we have to do all around. I think we just have to say, hey, by the way, as of this date, you have to comply with this. And if they say we can't, then we're willing to say, okay, you have one more cleanup period. I don't think we have to do all the research to find out what they have.
Okay. But so then, let me say, are, do you anticipate compliance with this law by this date? And if they say no, can we ask them to explain it, and then we can deal with it in the case by case?
So make sense of that, something?
I mean, I almost think, I almost say, I almost think we just tell them, if you have, if you think you're going to have to comply with any problems with compliance, let us know.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, please.
Right. Because otherwise, you have to trace down the people.
But we have to emphasize that we are talking about a specific decibel level that is beyond what most get. We, we have to make it clear that we are in fact talking about eliminating gas leaf blowers.
Except for push behind.
So, but I think that has to be, I think that has to be clear. So, but I think that has to be, I think that has to be clear.
Right.
That's just almost impossible. Here's the thing, so, by even saying that there's a gas option, it confuses the entire thing, because if all of you think there is no gas option, in effect, then why even put that out there? That's the problem that I'm struggling with. Your answer, Larry, was, "I thought that that meant no gas." I think Mark already said that, so, so then why am I even mentioning gas?
Well, there are gas options, Brian, just out of the...
I think what we're saying is...
If they decide that they can only do gas, then they'll do those gas options.
I think we can say, "This essentially eliminates gas blowers."
Our intention is, but if you want to meet the decibel level by getting gas, but understand that our intention over time is to eliminate gas. I don't think we have to say, "We're eliminating gas today," because we know...
We can say the law essentially eliminates gas, except that, you know...
And we're also saying that, you know what? If you bought something a year and a half ago and we're giving you another nine months, you didn't need something new anyway, so buy some, you know, the next thing you buy...
Give people a little time.
And maybe you're buying, right, and maybe you're buying it three months earlier or six months earlier, but if you want to, you know, work in Irvington...
You can use the oil one and...
Then, are you also prepared that we, I'm sure, are gonna hear from the residents who, because of those, the responses to Finder's questionnaire were really almost a classic bell curve. There are people who are going to be outraged that they can't use gas leaf blowers because they're so much more efficient.
I know, but I think the board needs to take a stand against fifty percent of the people who are in favor of... I think the board needs to take a stand against fifty percent of the people and in favor of the other fifty percent.
It's not even gonna be fifty-fifty, though.
It's gonna be ten percent of the people that have, and half of them have electric already anyway. It's easier to maintain.
How about, here's one, two, three, four, five, six seals.
That's right, yeah. Actually, one of them's a quarter. But it seems like there's some.
Right, but there are most.
There's two gas models. Steel, I think, but they say at that rate.
So, I think the letter you described, we got it. I think we know what to do.
If someone wants...
I can ask you the other question, which I don't ask to answer. What about the lockbehinds? Because what's gonna happen is the lockbehinds are gonna become much more problematic, because it's an easy solution for them.
Well, I do think that if we're looking to, I don't think Yonkers allows lockbehinds, right?
They don't make the exceptions.
Right, exactly. That's why I'm thinking that if we're gonna be following Tarrytown's or Yonkers law, you know, we're gonna change, I think we're gonna change, if we accept it with that route.
So, you say that in the letter, that the expectation is lockbehinds would not fit this approach. We're looking, I mean, we'll all have to change our law, but this is the time to tell people, like, guys, your point, they're not using them now, and this is the time to communicate. Itself is not gonna be stayed this way. It's just that...
So, I know, Mark, that Marian's not here. The Yonkers law that she sent there was totally outlawed all gas leaf blowers during the summer season, during the same season that we're outlawing, with exceptions. What's the Yonkers law for all the other time, for the cleanup times?
I think they're okay, which is why, you know, I'm surprised.
All of them are okay? Anything you want to use is okay?
Yeah, I think so. There's a hell of a...
I think so, which is why Hastings, I was surprised Hastings was just gonna do that because they have a much stricter law than ours here.
Yeah, it's interesting.
And I know Tarrytown's law isn't as strict as ours either.
What's Tarrytown law?
I don't remember specifically, but I know it's not as strict as ours.
So, the other thing, just because we've had the input, you know, this is, some of this is apple and oranges, this discussion, because we're looking at noise level as kind of a proxy for a lot of other situations, meaning health impacts as well. You know, we've got a lot of discussion brought to us, like the young kid that came and talked about the particulate matter and the fumes from the two-stroke engine and all the kind of stuff that creates asthma and other sorts of lung problems. We know about the noise issue, and we know also about soil issues. So, you've got all those different things, and what we're narrow focusing on is noise as a proxy to fix some of it. So, I just wanted to be sure that we realize it's not gonna satisfy a lot of people.
You have to get a little electric also.
Right, even electric's not gonna satisfy those people. Electric will give a bit of the fumes and it's...
But it's not gonna soil the road on it.
You know, people are astuteous about it, I think. I just want to be sure that we've at least brought it up, that there's gonna be, you know, I could hear it now, but we haven't gone far enough.
Of course, you know. Unless they're handing out breaks to every homeowner in the village.
That's breaks.
It's interesting, I read an article about, but I think it was written by someone who worked for, like, Engo, wherever the company was, about how the studies about comparing gas engines to the, you know, which pollutes more. They said it was, those things are apples and oranges because it's, that's by miles driven versus hours used. And if you look at the two of them, that it actually uses forty-five times more in a month than, and so it's like, to me, it's, I think that's why we get back to noise, because it's easier. And, you know, electric is gonna kick up dust and it's gonna destroy the soil and stuff, so it's hard. So, people don't want to have that. Yeah, I think we're keep having this.
Lawn mowers a lot, aren't they? So, you know, I guess we're gonna have just a lot of goats and brooms.
You're calling the pushmowers that...
The push, the walk-behind goats.
Yeah, walk-behind goats. See, we should have a lot of goats. That's a big weakness in our comprehensive...
Oh, yeah. I love goats, actually.
How about plowers? Why, do you feel like you could write about them?
Start drafting it. We'll send it around.
At least you'll have them.
We won't have Sergeant Pig to tell the checkers, right?
But, I mean, will we correct it that our intention is to give notice that the current law is sixty-five decibels if you use gas? And we'll say specifically, "Most all gas leaf blowers do not meet the standard."
Yeah, I think we'd have to spell that out.
And our intention is, over time, to eliminate...
Yeah, I have absolutely...
Including the walk-behind.
I just want it to be in a way that is reasonable and not, doesn't put working people in an impossible situation.
In terms of words, maybe, is there a way to say this without saying there's an exception for walk-beinds? There's no limitation on noise and lockbehinds, and we just sort of just talk about...
Go Mootown?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Other than setting a link to our law.
Which wouldn't be that helpful.
Yeah. Which is to see Rick in Latin.
I think the time and exception is sort of, talk about...
Yes, and you're basically gonna not be able to, you're just gonna focus on the sixty-five.
And then sometime in the season, in the fall, when you look at Tarrytown and Yonkers, change of, that's into, in the fall.
Definitely, we're gonna decide to keep ours and simplify it, take out most of the exceptions.
Which is why I think...
We can't leave our switch.
Okay. So, can I just ask one question? Joe, when do you think you might have some hands-on experience? Not you, you've got it.
I would say we won't have any update for you until probably the end of July. Because I still haven't made a final decision on what models we're going with.
So, in a couple of months.
That's just... I'm hoping to have, you know, something, or at least one or two of the pieces in the horticulturalist's hands by the beginning of July, and then, you know, we're gonna see how they feel about it, so.
I have an hour meeting, so maybe you can come back in, you know, maybe early August or whatever, or whatever meeting we have in August. We'll see if our vacation schedules, Larry, now we're trying to figure out when we can have meetings, we'll figure if we can.
We should review that, vacations.
Review capital budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so, just by way of introduction, the capital budget and the analysis of it, you'll see, is broken down into projects that are water-related and projects that are all other projects, non-water. That's really a function of the way debt is incurred by the village. We have to separate our water debt and our non-water debt by statute. So, what I'll do is, most of the action, of course, is in the non-water side, so I'll hand that information out first. What I thought I'd do is give you the projections of debt service, which I know you've seen before, the various graphs that we operate from. There's a little difference this year. It's actually a big difference this year. We've been talking for years about some large projects on, sometimes those large projects can dominate the conversation and therefore dominate some of the graphs that you'll look at. And so, in the past, we've kind of kept those off to the side because they're not necessarily, you know, real projects yet, but they, but the concepts exist. So, in this year's numbers, what you'll be looking at is a projection that includes some of the, includes all of those large projects that we know about. It makes the graphs look terrible, which is fine, but I want, at least for you to see it in context, I think it's helpful so that you understand how all this fits together. But recognize that for the larger projects we're talking about, which includes Firehouse, DPW facility, even the theater entrance project to some extent, that those projects are, there are no details associated, projects that we all recognize as being necessary down the road. So...
But we don't have the solution yet for location of some of those.
We do know what the problem is, we just don't know what the solution is.
So, look, this graph, I mean, it's, I won't say it's self-explanatory, but for those of you who've seen this a lot before, it's pretty scary-looking. So, what's in blue is our existing debt service that we're retiring and the Maroon is recommended projects, which we'll go through in greater detail so you understand how they exist. So, you know, clearly, in some of the outer, in some of the initial upcoming years, you'll see some larger projects, including the DPW and the Firehouse.
Is there a way to see this graph with realistic projects? I mean, I say realistic, because I can't see us going forward with either of those two.
You mean, almost like you have some that are likely projects and planning stage projects, you know, they almost have a third thing here that, you know, this much is conceptual.
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's a, is there a way to maybe different, create a third?
Twenty-six.
Yeah, I mean, anything's possible, sure.
Twenty-fifty-six.
Would be sleeping underground.
Because it's kind of hard to, you know, to read just a crap out of it.
Well, let's listen to what...
Yeah, yeah.
We're good by twenty-four. I'll be seven.
All right, so this schedule starts breaking down the projects year by year, and then, within each year, of course, I've broken down by department just for ease of analysis. So, I can go through and talk about some of the larger projects. Obviously, if you have specific questions about any of these projects, just ask and we'll try to answer it. But, so for DPW, just as a reminder, for the first two items, and again, I'm not gonna go item by item, but just so you understand what they are. For the first two items that are on there, we list out what we call recurring infrastructure maintenance. That money is set aside in the operating budget. It's reflected here because it's a capital expenditure, it's something that you're investing in, but you're just not funding it with debt. You're funding it with your operating budget on a yearly basis. So, it's reflected there because you should acknowledge that you're investing that much in your infrastructure. And these are just general, either drainage projects, you know, miscellaneous infrastructure-type projects. You're starting to do the same thing with paving. We had typically had about a hundred or now a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of annual paving that we borrowed for. You've now shifted sixty thousand of that over to the operating budget. The remaining sixty is still here to be borrowed. The, we talked about crosswalk extensions. That's related to the Main Street Handicap curb project. That relates to bumping out at the various intersections, and I think we had that conversation at a working session a few months ago.
Picked over Aqueduct Crossing?
That's just to make up for the items that were essentially unreimbursable by the state grant. So, the state, you know, when we submitted it, we submitted the entire project. The state grant did not cover things like the memorial, anything related to the memorial, the monuments, and some of the cleanup and repair work that we did in the Aqueduct parking lot. So, that's really a cleanup of it.
And in terms of the notion of trying some signalized crosswalks, that's not, would that be in the capital budget or is that...
We have old money...
Already set aside?
Old money set aside for one of them, which is the Aqueduct Crossing, and we have money set aside in the federal project that does the handicap, I'm sorry, not the federal project, the state and municipal funds that we received through the Dormitory Authority. I know, it's basically the old portbar money that, member money. We received a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do two enhanced crosswalks, and one of them, I believe, is to include the signalization. That's all being rolled into that one big project for Main Street. Well, I mean, I'll have an update on the charging stations later, but that money's provided here. The West Sunnyside Lane Drainage, this is a, you'll see other drainage projects in DPW. This is our progression through our flood study, which was done in two thousand and ten, and we're progressing through by handling some of the choke points like Station Road Culvert, the now the Hudson View Park Culvert. West Sunnyside Drainage is another area we need to work on, and there's others, as you'll Fire Department is another, just a general explanation about how we handle that, and it's a little bit, a little bit duplicative, but just to understand. You'll see in future years that there is a provision for a replacement of a firehouse. It's a ten million dollar number. It's really just a placeholder. You'll also see other individual projects here, which are rehabilitating the existing We will pull the plug on any of these, any of these projects if the prospects of a new firehouse becomes more realistic. So, even though you may be saying yes here to those projects, and we have them scheduled out in order to be able to remain in that firehouse in at least some sort of reasonable condition, doesn't meet a lot of standards, but it meets, you know, it's a livable building for now. So, we have those projects scheduled out to at least remain there if we have to, if there are other alternatives. But as you know, we're still pursuing other alternatives. Moving on to, well, I'm on to the next page, unless you have any other questions.
Could I just ask a quick one?
Yeah.
Chiller replacement, is that our fraction of it? I mean, assuming we're not, or do we take full payment for the village versus the apartment?
Yeah, so, we, the chiller serves a very high percentage of, a very high percentage of the chiller usage is for the library. There's only a very small amount that serves the apartments, and it's only the apartments that face the railroad tracks. And so, there could be cost sharing. We're not suggesting that that conversation can't... We're not, we're not suggesting that that conversation can't happen. We don't have an agreement. We haven't discussed it with them. This is the full replacement amount. We will have a dialogue about some cost sharing, but it's not going to be significant. I mean...
So the apartments in the back, then they have window units or anything?
Yeah, they have no air conditioning. The decision at the time, as I recall, was that the housing, the housing owner only opted for air conditioning for the units facing the railroad tracks because they were more prone to have to keep their windows closed because of the train.
Really?
That's the explanation. And also, I think it, they were able to utilize the chiller that was being put in for the library. The capacity was there to, to use that, and it didn't require any sort of upsizing. So they kind of just piggybacked on it. So there really hasn't been any significant sharing of costs in the past.
Along those same lines, like for the waterproofing of the foundation, is there going to be some cost sharing on that?
Yeah, I think those conversations have started, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So this amount is the total cost?
I don't know.
The AD is the total cost?
That's the total cost.
Great, so we'll be talking about cost sharing, some of that.
Okay, so Matheson Park. You, Joe, you're welcome to come up, by the way, and not, I mean, you had, certainly you had a presentation on the Matheson Park repairs, renovation, I should say. So the way this is, the way this is laid out is in phases, and we divided up the, the first phase, which is essentially the playground, the playground and the pathway work, which I know, you know, was described to you in the, in the previous presentation. But the playground and the pathway work is essentially what we're counting as Phase One here, Joe, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And then you'll see when we look at some of the future years here, that we'll also have bathroom renovations, and then the stage, the stage that I think you saw on the plans as well. So we'll, those, those are in, in future years after this, but, but the main...
What's the estimated cost on the bathroom? About a hundred ninety-five thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. And then the stage, I think, there's a placeholder there of five hundred.
Joe, a billion four fifty-five is the number that you're comfortable with?
These are the numbers that basically came from our report in our meetings with Larry and Brenda. So the one four five totally completes the playground, the splash pad, and the twelve-foot pathway around the park.
And the fencing around it.
And the fencing around it, yes. Everything that you saw on the playground, including the splash pad, and then that new pathway would be completed in Phase One.
And if I...
Not to see the debt in the slide, but...
I, I'm sorry. No, I mean, that's...
Might I comment on that? As, you know, obviously, I, I'd like to do every part of it. If you, if you fund Phase One, and let's just be honest, things take time. If you fund the bathrooms in the second year, the timing would work well anyway, because we're going to be working our way out of the park, if you will. So in Year Two, you know, I kind of see the whole construction, as I said at that meeting, as being about an eighteen-month project. So if Year Two has the money for the bathrooms, by the time you're done in Year Two, you will have everything but the stage done.
If you're comfortable with it, yes.
And it, and probably not, I mean, I haven't seen certainly specifications or even thought about how to bid this, but theoretically, the bathroom contractor is probably a different contractor than the site work contractor for the playground and all the other work. So it's probably a separately bid contract anyway. So, you know, if, if this, I think this is more of, I think the timing would still work this way. Doesn't, doesn't mean that it's being put off for a whole year. I think it could be viewed as almost the same project. Assuming, obviously, next year you approve the funding, but, yeah.
Next year, the cash will be available, let's say, August, the earliest, you know, once you go through the resolutions for the bathroom.
Yeah, that timing would work, yeah. We can, we can go out to bid if we need to, as long as there's no concerns, you know, about that.
So if it happens that any of these fall into one of the grants, the consolidated funding thing, none of them do?
Nah.
This year?
No, I mean, I suppose it's possible, yeah, see, the timing wouldn't work because there really, first of all, there's nothing that's worthwhile going after this year as it relates to this parks grant.
The waterfront stuff?
No, there really isn't, and the, look, the words, the words that were told to me is that the, that the parks grant, which would obviously most closely address this particular one, for the amount of money that's available, is more trouble than it's worth. It also gives rise to the next question, which hasn't been addressed by the board yet, and I don't know when it will be, but if you take outside money, the park is going to be not residence only any, for any longer. I'm not saying that's not the way you're going to go anyway, or, you know, not making any decisions here. I'm just saying that, that that question has to answer, has to be answered first. If funding applications are due in July, and I'm being told that they're more trouble than they're worth, so that's why the decision just really, the timing just doesn't work, from my standpoint.
And how big are those grants?
Every year, there are different chunks of money for different things that, looked at them over the years.
I mean, they can be as big as a half a million dollars, but...
Oh, yeah, somewhere a million.
Sure. I mean, the parks grant up here was, was three, two hundred and thirty thousand for the, for the Aqueduct Crossing, you know? That was a good-sized one. I don't know that we would be able to see that here. I think there's, I think there's possibilities going forward, especially if there's a decision on, on how the park is going to be open or not. I think there's possibilities for the stage. I think that has a huge, a lot of places that that can touch in terms of, of funding ability.
The one grant that I think I might, personally, just sent an email, was Tom Ebonati reached out and said that he might have some for creation money.
State and municipal, Sam, Sam money.
Sam money.
Yeah.
So to me, it's not, it's not this kind of size, it's maybe a thousand bucks.
No, it'll be, it'll be between a hundred and a hundred and fifty, probably.
So, but to me, that's, you know, that's ten percent of the cost. For me, sending an email is probably worth my time.
You got to get that other question answered first. The board has to get that other question answered.
And I think we, it would probably make that question up if you said, yes, it's available.
Right.
So I think we've already kind of said generically that, you know, I, I think we're all happy to have it tomorrow. But, but I'll, that's what we follow for me, see if there's, you have to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars off the, you know, one point four five, make it home.
Yeah, that, that grant is, is...
Most of the bathrooms. Yeah, where the bathrooms?
Yeah, that, that grant is pretty fantastic.
Restaurant facility?
Yeah.
I think it should be named after me.
It's the, it's the walkway part of this one four five five. What, what amount is that? Just, you were separating out the cost of the widening of the, the walkway. Some kind of thing that Tom, you know, could connect to it. It's better for wheelchairs, it's better for...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's two hundred plus some soft costs, so it's probably two fifty-ish.
It hasn't said money.
Right, so that's, that, that, to me, that would be a nice little part for Tom to, let's say, yeah.
You could put it in a sign, by the way.
A nice fit.
Sign off on that.
So you know now what we're talking about?
It's just two hundred thousand.
Could you text me your rate now?
Yeah.
Give us the money?
So Larry, in terms of the spillway, how's the pond spillway?
Yeah.
Was this money in the, I don't remember if it was in the projected budget last year? Is this moving in forward, or, or did we find out that we had to build a special kind of spillway?
So, so no, it was, I don't believe we had identified a number as of last year. It's been a, it's been a multi-stage process, as you know. The first step in all of this was to do an engineering analysis of the dam. That's what the DEC required us to do. So we hired an engineer at a pretty, pretty high cost to do this engineering analysis. Prior to the engineering analysis even being done, they identified the existence of the lower dam and the condition of the lower dam being frankly very close to breaching and failing. So, so that's, we, the engineering analysis ultimately got completed, but in the interim, the work that we ended up having to do and, and the direction we had to go with the money that we had was to breach that dam in a controlled way and eliminate that pond down there. That was the, the chosen method, rather than trying to rehabilitate that dam. So that's all of the work that we've been doing. In the meantime, the engineering analysis was completed, and the two main recommendations from that analysis, and I, I planned to circulate all this around so that you can see it for yourself, and I, it's an extensive report. But suffice it to say that there are two main recommendations from there, aside from just keeping the place clean and trees cut down, you know, brush and all that stuff removed, is to construct an auxiliary spillway, so that if the, if the water rises to a level where it, it could potentially overtop the dam and, and therefore you rode the front face of it, which would put it in danger, there would be an auxiliary spillway constructed probably to the south side, I think that's the south side of the dam, that will, will take water prior to overtopping and allow it to exit the pond and into the lower stream. That's one part of it. The other part of it is that there needs to be a way of lowering the level of the pond. There was historically a valve system similar to the reservoir, the large reservoir, and, but the, there's no, there's been no way to, it, it doesn't work, first of all, and we don't know even where the, the facilities are to make it work. So we have to, to design a, you know, some sort of a valve system to, to allow us to lower the level if we need to for maintenance or if we need to for emergency purposes. So those are the two items that have to be worked on. The, the estimate for design, construction, and oversight of the construction is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's with a fairly high contingency because it hasn't been designed yet. The remainder between three hundred and fifty thousand and four hundred and twenty-five thousand that's being asked for is essentially the overage that the lower dam cost us to breach. In other words, that was completely unanticipated.
Right.
So that's to make up for that. But the, the bulk of that four twenty-five is the remediation required as a result of the engineering analysis. I actually think that if you, if you compared this to what we thought it could be, that the fact that we're significantly under a million dollars, we talked about it at, at some of our meetings, we, we thought it was going to be a million, million plus easily to do the repairs to this dam. The fact that we're under that is, is actually good news. I know, I know four hundred and twenty-five thousand isn't good news, but it is good news in this context.
That's some money that we've already spent.
Well, yeah, right.
And that includes valves, or does not include the valves?
Includes the valves.
I was shocked how much the valves lowered.
It was, yeah.
It was a surprise.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, we're talking about, we're, we're talking about probably sixty or so thousand dollars of design work that's got to get started now, and, you know, once this hopefully gets approved, they'll, they'll get going on that. And then the work itself will be bidding out. We're not going to be doing it again ourselves the way we did it this time. How it looks, how it integrates with the, with the path around the pond, you know, we have to work through that, but there's going to be an auxiliary spillway. Now, the spill, auxiliary spillways don't get used.
Until they...
Until they get used. But, but, so, you know...
You can walk through there.
My guess is that it'll be somewhere, there'll be a way to traverse through there. The issue is not, it's not that there's going to be some permanent structure blocking the pathway and, you know, but I'm sure there's a way to work through that. Anyway, so that's...
Is that a bridge?
Well, I mean, there could be a little footbridge, I suppose.
Wash away.
Make it four fifty. Okay, so that's, yeah.
So, so on this chart, is this, is this, let's try to line up twenty-one, twenty-two here. This is, we're looking at here as nineteen twenty...
We still all in blue with what we've just talked about?
It's a good picture.
No, no, so...
Or is there no proposed, Tom? This is, this is nineteen twenty, right? So that would be, show it on the side.
So the last blue, full blue one is the year we're in.
Yeah, so the next one's a little bit of red.
That's what we're talking about now.
Yeah, hold on, hold on.
It seems like it's only, it's only at like two point one or two point two.
Yeah, no, see, here's, here's the thing, everything's delayed by a year. So what, what happens is, yeah, you're, the, the year that, that is shown here as the last blue year, or all blue, is, is nineteen twenty. That's the year we're in now, but the...
Twenty twenty. I bet you twenty, you mean it's nineteen slash twenty.
Twenty, nineteen, twenty.
Twenty women have got the rights of one year.
Sorry. Now we're taking on all the debt.
Right, so, so the projects that, so, so that, that debt is locked, that debt service is locked in for this year. There won't be any new debt service for this fiscal year, two thousand nineteen twenty, right?
Yeah.
The following year, where there's a little bit of red on top?
Yeah.
That, those are the projects from nineteen twenty that will be paid off, start paying off in...
Just apply it here nineteen twenty.
In, in, in...
Still paying that off?
In twenty twenty-one.
It's like a year work.
I guess I don't, I'm not thinking straight. Why are we delaying the year? Don't we, I mean, don't you have to start paying interest when you get the, the capital?
No, no, so the borrowing will take place during this coming fiscal year, but the first time you make a payment is a year later. It's not like, it's not like a mortgage where you pay monthly installments. We pay it once a year.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, so that's why.
So, so I'm still, I still don't understand, which, which is the bar for what we just talked about?
For Matheson Park?
Yeah, for the total of three million four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to be bonded.
Yeah, the very first year that has red in it, that's twen, that's two thousand twenty twenty slash twenty-one, right?
Right, but that looks like it's only about two million two hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah, but it, and that's, and that's true, and if you want to see the, here's the, maybe an easier way to look at it, rather than trying to figure out the graph in, in detail. If you turn on, in that packet that has the non-water chart, the very last page are the numbers that are graphed, well, starting with, with fiscal year nineteen slash twenty.
I like the way you go up to twenty fifty-six.
This page only is forty-four.
Well, yeah, because it, it was a waste of, a waste of paper looking at the actual numbers that far out. So the, the very first year that has only blue in it on that graph has debt service of one, one million nine hundred and four thousand. The following year, if these projects are approved as presented, your debt service will be two point two million. So that doesn't look like a lot, it's three hundred thousand dollars. So in comparison to the future years, that's not a lot, but it's still three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So next, so if these projects are approved as presented, next year's debt service will rise by three hundred thousand dollars. So when you're preparing your budget for next year, you'll have that to absorb.
We should lease goods now.
Or we do not take, right, they go...
And then the next one?
So then, and then the future years, of course, look a lot worse, and, and what I understand about breaking out the, the large-scale projects from the mainstream projects, and so I certainly can do that. The reality is that, and I'm...
What did our debt service increase this year?
Well, it was other, no, the, the budget for it seemed really...
No, I mean, there's a history, the history's right here, yeah. It did go down a little bit. No, I'm sorry, it is, no, it was up.
It was up, I think, the cost of it, whatever reason, it had money that was...
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
So the debt service, yeah?
We generally stay in a pretty tight range, I mean, as best we can. I mean, it's, the problem are these big projects.
Yeah, we're like wrecking a while.
Well, yeah. His project's tiny compared to the other ones he's...
If I saw this first, you would have a much bigger photograph than you.
I heard half this line is electric leaf blowers.
There you go.
It's actually battery caused.
Yeah.
So without...
So we're not looking at any theater expense other than carpet, carpet floor replacements?
Sounds pretty nice, too, actually.
Yes, not, not at this point, that's correct. That's correct.
Is that because it doesn't make sense to put air conditioning in unless you do the, now that there's the talk of the side entrance?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's all being looked at as one project.
Yeah.
Um, one question on that, uh, I, I see. Is the leaky roof included on, in any of these like infrastructure maintenance or? I know there's a clock tower next year.
Yeah, I mean, that, that work should be taken up as part of the clock tower restoration. So i- if you've, if you've looked at the top of the building, you see that, that the clock tower structure, there's parts of it that need, that need work. And there's painting that needs work, or the painting needs to be done. But the leak is as a result of rotted areas of the clock tower. So it, I mean.
So that's next year's project?
Yes. Well, cause we, we don't, we don't have, I mean, look, we could, we could certainly accelerate anything.
But, but yeah, it's gonna take a long plan.
But we've got, yeah, exactly, we've got.
Do we need money to start the, the engineering work or not yet? Just worth about seven, fifteen percent of the cost. So, on your side?
Typically, yeah.
Forty thousand.
Yeah, well, let me, let me find, let me find out.
Is that where we're ready to go, you know, like?
Yeah. For next summer.
It's not easy to even find the engineers probably to do that kind of work with this.
Well.
I guess we decided, uh.
We did, yeah.
We shouldn't have the same guys do it again.
That's a whole different story.
I will tell you that having the money a few years ago to do, start the study in Matheson Park is what put us in the position we were in now. To be ready to.
Yeah, so maybe we should.
That's fine, okay. Okay.
So the car estimations and trucks and stuff, are they, do they have room in them for, uh, alternate fuels? You know what I'm saying? Or is it just like looking at our current gas models and?
So, the, the only ones, the only ones that are being considered for hybrid in this current year are the police vehicles. Like we, we had talked about that before, I believe. Um, and it looks like there's two of them. The, um.
And the superintendent's.
And, and I'm sorry, and then, and then the water superintendent's vehicle as well. So those, those three. The, uh, the fire chief's car, we did, we did explore that with them. The problem, the problem is that, uh, is the amount of equipment that they need to maintain in those chief's vehicles uh, will not fit in, we asked them this question directly. It won't fit in the Explorer, which is the hybrid that is available, um, on that county contract. They currently have a. They currently have a Tahoe and it's tight, so they're proposing a Suburban for the replacement of this vehicle. So, I, you know, it's, I, I can't, I don't think I can, I don't think I'm in the position of saying, sorry, you have to use a smaller vehicle. I, I don't.
They have electrical load.
Yeah, they're concerned about that, but I think that could be overcome. Cause if it's not an electric vehicle we're talking about, it's a, it's a hybrid. So, um, you know, they have a lot of electronics, just both the police department does too. All right, that's not the major issue. The issue is the space, physically the space.
And the dump truck sander?
I don't, I don't know of a commercially available.
That's what I'm asking.
Vehicle.
We're still, there's nothing there yet.
I haven't seen it. I think the, I think before we, um, well, like we talked about when we talked about the policy that you adopted. The, um, the likelihood of a dump truck that is used as a sander being available, certainly not electric. Because I'm not gonna be the one that tells them to go in and charge it, um, in the middle of a storm. But if a hybrid becomes available, that's great. Alternate fuels, you know, you need the, you need the fueling capacity, the refueling capacity. So there may be, you know, LNG available, but we don't have a filling station here. So it's, you know, it remains to be seen. I think the, the more likely scenario is that there becomes a commercially available pickup truck that meets our needs with, you know, plowing and towing capacity and all the other things that we needed for. Uh, that's probably the next logical thing that'll come about, but it's.
It's electric, you mean?
Well, yeah, or even, even hybrid if that's available. But, um, again, EVs, the, the difficult part with applying that to our public works department is the need for the consecutive hours of operation that they have during emergency events. I don't know how to overcome that. Straight EV, you know.
Swappable battery.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if that becomes available, by all means, you know, we said it all along, we'd look at that. So these numbers don't reflect that, but the, but the three vehicles we mentioned do reflect that. Um, so, I can just skim over the, the future years. I'm, I'm looking at page.
Jeff, I got one more question. Um, this year, for the theater, uh, the floor and carpet replacement, is that, how does that relate to the fundraising that's being done to the renovations? We would still, we would still find carpet and floor replacement?
This is only with, this is within the existing theater, so I don't.
So not related to the.
Not related at all.
Okay.
Nope.
I, I think the only, the only thing I have for this year is kind of something that Doc said, um, for Joe, actually, is, kind of along the same lines, if, for the bathroom upgrades, if we're doing any kind of architectural drawings or things like that. If you wanna put that in this year so that can happen, so we don't lose another spring or something, you know what I mean? So if we could have, you know, obviously we don't have, we don't, we're not gonna start that this year, we're working on the rest of it. But if you wanna have the plans done this year, so that way next year, as soon as the park parts done, you can, you know, go out and bid on that or something. Think about the timing.
I would think though, some of the soft costs that are into the project would allow us to, to use that to have John work on that. And we already have a lot of the bathrooms.
So maybe you don't need it.
Yeah, I appreciate it and I'm not trying to give it back, but.
We had some fairly good outline in our plans. But just so that way we don't lose another season with the bath, you know what I mean? Like if we start it like in the winter and actually get going.
Well, like, the good thing about the bathrooms is if you, if we have difficulty, like we lost all the water and seen the cuts in last night. And we brought portage on it, so it's not the ideal thing, but there's always a way to.
Yeah.
That's why we haven't made the bathrooms a priority, because whatever the thing else we're doing, you know, it, it just, it's the more important stuff, you know? But we can check that. Am I right about being able to use some of the?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's why.
No question. I mean, you could, it, it's, the amount of engineering costs to do the bathroom design is like a rounding error for a project like this.
Right, they say it's not a lot, that's for sure. So maybe just more to talk.
Especially it's cause you have a little plumbing, it's very little plumbing that's gonna be moved.
No, I think our, our, our water department is doing something to upgrade the service, right?
Yeah, not because of our project, but it is a good time to connect and make sure Jim's aware of what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
So if that might have to change what he's looking at.
Right, nineteen sixteen pipes as well.
Well, yeah, but it, it relates to going way back where the boat, the boat club actually pulls their water off of a pit on our property. It's just, it's a, it's a weird relationship, yeah, and so.
Very weird.
Yeah, so we're gonna.
Prefer a story.
Shift that around a little bit. Okay. And, so going forward, you know, looking at, looking at some of the, the big picture stuff. We. I'm on page four, but, um, you know, we, we, we did put a placeholder in there for a DPW facility. You know that the, the schools are also interested in, in some sort of a, a longer-term solution for their maintenance facility. So we are engaged in ongoing discussions with them just to coordinate, you know, make sure that, see if there's ways that we can share, uh, going forward. And, and by all means, this is not a number that was arrived at by a professional. It's, it's a.
By a professional administrator.
Well, maybe, but it's, uh.
Or should I use that number?
Yeah. Um, let's see what else. We also continue.
That's an example of what I was calling.
Is it the same year?
Theoretical.
Through the offense.
Yeah.
Everything else is pretty much, pretty much more reality based.
Yes, yeah.
One without a word.
Yep. No, we can, we can break that out. The, um.
You know, for the next two years.
Right. Now, the, the other thing just to point out, and I know we've talked about flooding projects, drainage projects. You know, we do continue on with the recommended projects from the flood study. So even in this, in this future year of two thousand twenty slash twenty-one, did I say it right?
Yeah.
That we, we do have, you know, work on Hudson Road that we're gonna look at. But we also start, it's an insignificant dollar amount, but I just wanted to point out that we do start the investigation work, the mapping and some of the pre-engineering work for, uh, drainage repairs on Har- along Harriman Road. So that's essentially in the Meadow Way area, Meadow Way down to Parkside Way. There's a, a significant, um, blockage or, uh, obstruction under Harriman Road there that causes a significant amount of flooding as well as just the topography of the area, um, of Meadow Way particularly. And so, but that's a big project and you'll see it actually two years further out as, when we start looking at this. Yeah, and that's really just, again, some engineering work. And then I, I have it scheduled for two years later, two thousand twenty-two, I believe, where we actually have, uh, you know, drainage repairs on, uh, uh, Harriman Road. And, and that allows us time to, to look for funding, to be honest with you. Because that, that's a project that could be fundable since there are some, there have been losses historically, flood losses in those areas. Um, and so it may be something that's fundable by FEMA, uh, as a mitigation. Again, picking up on the, on the large project theme, you'll see, uh, in, at the same year as the EPW facility replacement, there's the first phase of the firehouse replacement. I decided that putting ten million dollars in one year wasn't a right, a good idea. So I put five in one year and five in the following year.
So buy the property the first year.
Yeah, exactly. Right, whatever property that is. And, uh, and so that you'll see there.
Be an Elmsford.
Yeah. Well, look, I mean, there's lots of options. Just none of them are realistic. On, uh, page six, just to point out, there's, um, a couple of water projects. So there's two that we're working on right now. One of them, um, is certainly pertinent, which is the replacement of the River, River Road water line. That engineering work is, is almost complete and, uh, needs to be submitted to the health department. We also are working on the engineering for the, for replacement of, uh, the water line or a portion of the water line on Mountain Road.
Remember River Road?
River Road, that's the.
It's the one, it's the one.
The one by Bridge, Bridge Street Properties that goes to the park.
Yeah.
So I, I know it's called a lot of different.
I know we have a lot of new sections of it now.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, and there's a lot of not new sections. Like the one last night was nineteen thirteen, I think it was pulled out.
That was sixty out of twenty-five.
These four women had the right to vote.
That was before, yeah.
The, the was, we would've had the right pipe.
We would've gotten the right pipe.
So.
And that's five hundred years.
So the idea with this is we, we have some level of debt service coming off the books in the water department. If I, if I hand out, um, this might be a good time, actually. I have my other pile here. These numbers are a little easier to look at, I suppose.
I like that. I like the chart better.
It's a little better, yeah.
Twenty sixty, we're good.
Yeah. So, um, so the year, um, I, I think it's actually, uh, two thousand twenty-two. There's a, a fairly significant drop in debt service, retiring debt service. And, uh, and those, in, in order to, uh, take advantage of that, we have the engineering done for these two projects. So we've moved these two projects, um, to be considered by you next year. And, and done, and borrowed the, in, in next year, which will then, uh, fill in the gap for the debt service that's here. I'm not even gonna list the years. But those are the two significant projects that we have. The, the project on Mountain Road, um, you know, there's a significant amount of funding available for water projects. The state budget has included significant appropriations for that. The project on Mountain Road meets none of the criteria that have been established by the state. Such as underserved communities, um, you know, areas that serve businesses, um, significant population, water that is, um, not potable or, you know, is, is, is in bad condition. It doesn't meet any of those criteria. So, um, the, the original thought was to replace the entire line along Mountain Road, which would've been about a two to two and a half million dollar project. At this point, we're, we're trying to be more realistic about it and, and really replace only the worst of the sections, which is from essentially Hermits Road down to the Sawmill. It's a difficult section to work in, but it's still, um, but that's the, the place where we've had the most trouble with breaks and, um, pipes sitting on rock and ledge and, and it's caused lots of problems over the years. The other sections are, are not as, not as difficult. So we've done the engineering for the entire length. Uh, we would recommend doing that project without even trying to seek any funding. There really is no funding available for that. The River Road project does have some potential for funding. I won't try to handicap it at this point, but at least it, it serves a, a business area, obviously. And so there, there's some potential for that. It also is impacted by the, by the, um, saltwater tidal flow of the Hudson River. So there's, uh, special treatments that have to be put on these pipes when they're put in. So there, there's, there's a few compelling things here. Uh, and obviously we have a history of breakage, so, um, I think we have a chance for that. So, um, we're expecting the, uh, funding for that to be announced and, and due back later in the summer, probably September or so. Um, that's what it was last year. We have the engineering basically done. The plans have been submitted to the health department for their approval. So hopefully we'll be really buttoned up and ready to go for a grant application for that. It's not part of the consolidated funding process, it's a separate process. So, um, so we will seek funding for that. In the meantime, and I know this is a concern, it's a concern for all of us. Jim Englishby has identified a, um, an interim measure, since we will not be doing this project right away. But hopefully within a year we will. But an interim measure to install a, a valve at a key location to allow for the greatest flexibility to shut down in case of breakage without having to shut down everything, like what happened last night. So, hopefully that gets completed in the next couple of weeks. He's got to identify the exact location and figure out all the logistics of it, but that, um, he's got to go ahead to go do that. It'll probably require a shutdown of the area, so the work will probably be done at night. But it's just the installation of a valve, it's not a.
Should be quicker than facing a lock.
Uh, yeah, it'll be a lot, a lot quicker. Um, but whatever it is, they'll get that taken care of.
When you say at night, you mean after business hours?
Yeah, we'll coordinate it and have it be after business hours.
Yeah.
No, I'm not sure it's gonna make them feel better, but that's, uh, that's, that's what the plan is. Anyway, that, you know, those types of projects work nicely within the existing debt service schedule and that's normally how we like to operate here, try to, try to smooth things over. But, uh, you know, with some of the large-scale projects that we're facing, it's just not possible. I should also point out that the, um, you know, when we do start talking about these larger-scale projects, if they, if they become, um, more realistic and, um, and more possible.
Those numbers might change.
The numbers will change for sure, but also, um, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna get you to the point where you probably have to override the tax cap is, is a likely scenario. And, you know, I think you've established obviously a very good record of not going over the tax cap. But when you're trying to absorb a, maybe fifteen million dollars worth of projects or something even bigger than that, you know, it's just not possible. So you're, so it's just something to keep on the horizon. It's, it's, there's, there's not gonna be, unless there's some miracle, I, there's not gonna be any way to, to really absorb that and still remain within a two percent, two percent tax cap.
Parker Ridge gonna run out?
Well, I mean, if, if, if everything comes together, you know.
Just the living facility?
I suppose it could be the case.
Bullying offers.
I mean, even, even the timing of it i- is, you know, the only thing we see on the horizon, of course, is the sale, the extra sales tax that the county's seeking. And if, if that's gonna be on, it would be on this coming year and you've already absorbed the, the increase of that, so.
So that's why it's valuable looking at these numbers the way they are.
Right.
Just to realize.
Yeah, I think we, we came, we talked about it a, a bit. We came to the conclusion that even though it's hard to look at, and I have no problems breaking things further, so it's, so some things are easier to answer. It's, it, you, you can't not look at it. It's gotta be, yeah, well, it's, it's gotta be on, on your radar screen and, and all of our radar screens, because they're, they're big projects. They don't just get done.
Larry, I would imagine, this is something we haven't done that before, maybe we have, but I just don't know. We've always talked about if there was going to be, uh, DPD. We've always talked about if there was going to be a DPW replacement at that property that it's on now, be repurposed either for a village use or sold for commercial development. Do we have any idea what the property is worth?
No, I don't.
Because it might be, I mean, that would be a way to offset, maybe several million, probably, just
Oh, sure. And actually, to be honest with you, I view that five million dollar number as a net number.
Yeah, right.
I really do, because I think a DPW facility is probably, I don't know if it's fifteen, but I think it's probably seven or eight, you know.
And value
Depends on the location.
Varies so much from year to year. You know, real estate value on that property.
Right.
This is something for
There could be a lot of variables to that.
Well, but then, and the other variables are, there's a big difference between rehabilitating an existing structure and building something from new, from scratch. And that's, I'll leave it at that. But that's, the point is, is there's a lot of variables, and I know, I know they're all there, but
Well, that's something that
But yes, I
Consideration, for sure.
Sure. And look, your comprehensive plan contemplates the property being repurposed for not government use.
The commercial for business.
Right. And you set up the idea that you would possibly revise the zoning to be more flexible and, frankly, make it more valuable, if you do it right. So there's even more variables than we think. So the firehouse is a little different. I think the firehouse property, if that were to become available, it seemed to be that the consensus was to keep it for public use, but that's, again, you can make those decisions in the future.
Hey, swimming pool on the roof.
Swimming pool.
Have you guys
Say.
The roof, we might as well
So no, I mean, those are the highlights going forward. The rest of it is fairly routine, you know, routine replacements. The only, I guess, one other quick highlight, and it's, you know, this is really, really pie in the sky, and it is on page ten.
That's where it's pie in the sky.
Yeah, that far away. So for 2022 slash 23
The Schaeffler Smith mausoleum?
Yeah, exactly.
That was the theater.
So there's the theater project. Now, if you look at it, it's
It's four million fundraising
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I didn't think it was appropriate to make any sort of significant statement here about what the board will or will not put up in the future. I thought that this type of a cost-sharing arrangement was kind of a non-controversial, just placeholder. I also, I mean, we don't know what the final cost will be, and we don't even know what ability there is to fundraise. So a lot of variables here, and rather than put in a hard number where, I mean, look, I'm sure the people in the theater would disagree with this statement, but the firehouse and DPW are projects that for all intents and purposes have to get done. The theater entrance, you can still run a village without a new theater entrance. That being said, I hope it gets done, but, so I didn't want to reflect it as an inevitable cost here, so I tried to put something fairly reasonable. I mean, it's all presentation, and it's five years out, or four years out anyway, so.
What about the lifetime number? That just caught my eye.
Oh.
Ten years, is that just because?
Those are set by the state. I don't know that we've done a full, we'd have to check, it could be fifteen.
For a building?
Yeah. Yeah, we'd have to check.
You could check.
But it's a building entrance.
We'll check.
It's a whole thing.
Yeah. We'll check. Those are set by the state, and it depends on how they're built and what they're made of, and it, the state has a whole schedule.
So will we vote on this next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I can break out the numbers you talked about and provide those on Monday, and I can include it on the agenda unless you have any reservations about or anything changed around significantly.
I just thought, pointing out the, I used to have, blue sky projects would make it easier for the public to read what was really going on.
Sure.
Because right now it looks like, you know, we're
We're doubling our debt.
Yeah, we're zooming into our major debt period in about, you know, six years.
Right, and that would also make it easy for us to set the stage for these expenses that we're acknowledging are going to be coming.
Right.
And here's a portion of it in terms of what's going to look like.
I agree. Yeah, okay. That's not a problem. So I'll, would that, would that change?
Actually, no. I mean, we talked about it in general.
Yeah.
Commitment's not the right term, but
The public should
I gotta avoid the DPW thing, you just can't. They're gonna happen, they're gonna be there sometimes, somehow.
It's hard to say what they're gonna cost, but yeah.
Yeah. And then you get this back, and you get that, and, but, so.
Repurpose
Wake up America.
I
Have we ever
That's why we're going there.
Given the need to do something vastly different with DPW, have we ever looked at rebuilding it, like using the existing site, but just, you know, flattening it, starting again with something that's far more visually appealing, and maybe using a second level for some of the other things we talked about in the comprehensive plan?
So not moving the site, keeping the same site, but having parking or
Yeah, yeah, just having it looked, I mean, right now it looks like, we're just waiting to move somewhere else, you know.
Well, this may not be the ideal solution.
I think, because we always thought that piece of property was
Was just so valuable.
Yeah, I know, it's just, it's crazy to
And there's so many big things, and also you can't like smoosh it into a, but in worst-case scenario, if we don't find something else within two years or three years, I mean, to at least have some idea what that might look like.
Yeah, I mean, look, in any, in any sort of planning project like this, I mean, we already have them in mind that that could happen with the firehouse. And so we're trying to address the living conditions in the firehouse currently and going forward. So that is certainly an option. There's the do nothing, there's the repair what you have, and there's move to a new facility. And right now, the desirable thing overall is to move, so we're trying to explore that. Is it the only option? No, it's probably not the only option.
But I think there's a fourth option, is what I hear you're saying, which is kind of a hybrid, which is not just simple repair, but basically tear it down and start over.
Yeah.
With you thinking maybe second, because we talked about a second story of office and perhaps some board departments, maybe just like revision the whole thing.
Right, right.
Some developer might figure
Sell the air rights.
You can do this.
Well, we still got to, Craig's got to have a little
No, it's short.
Yeah, it's like a
It's a truck.
It's a truck.
Probably doesn't change the number significantly, though. It's still a big project, so, yeah. So, well, we've got to move capital budget, so.
Next up is the discussion on water, but cable TV.
Yeah, I left a revised page there.
Would you want to talk about it now?
Yeah.
So, I'm Matheson, I know we're going to be discussing it going forward, the one thing I'd ask you to do is when you, if you're moving towards a direction of wanting to change the residence rule in Matheson, you just have to take a step back and look at the impact that's going to have, and there's lots of little things you have to look at, like for parties and rentals, the residents get first choice. Are we going to be allowed to charge for that if not residents get it? You know, there are things that go with it that have to be thought about. And for the most part, Monday through Friday right now, the park is open to everyone. The only time there's an exception is if there's a big event. So there seems to be some discussion of the impact of that, and I've already started preparing for you, points that I think you need to consider, that we need some direction on to go back to our pack, you know, to see how you feel about that. It could be a way to generate revenue, but I don't think it's as easy as just saying, okay, we're opening the park up. It has real implications on my ability and the staff's ability to take care of that park, because it will change. Just the traffic in the office for group requests will probably go up at least, you know, by, at least double.
Well, Joe, I think that you should assume that this discussion's going to happen sooner rather than later, so.
But I'm telling you to implement it in this year. If you make the change, you virtually be destroying our ability to run the budget the way you're giving it to us.
Well, lay it out for us.
That's what I'll do.
Take that into consideration when we have that discussion, but I'm just saying.
But my question on that is, if we just said tomorrow that the park is, we just said the park is open to everyone, we didn't take out an ad in Enterprise or the New York Post and, you know, got people to trade tickets, how would anyone even know?
Well, if you did that and you just maintained that group request stay residents, at least short-term
Yeah.
That would be a very, that would help a great deal. Our biggest issues happen when the group requests come in. So if you, if you changed what you just said, you know, if you did what you just said, as long as you had more time to look at, what impact will it have long-term?
Yeah, I mean, just curious, I mean, I don't, you know, because I mean, I don't think we're going to turn away a lot of people.
Nope.
So, you know, I don't
But there's a lot of people who don't think that could come.
Right, but, again, if we just, you know, again, if we don't scream it from the rooftops, not do it in secret, but at the same time, publicize it.
Well, the easiest thing to do is you change the sign on the park.
Yeah.
That's the easiest thing to start the process. I'm just telling you, you know, just from the amount of people we turn away who want group requests in Matheson now, once that veil gets lifted
Yeah.
The parks will get changed tremendously, which is fine if that's the way we go.
I think what we can do too, is there's probably a middle ground there, even long-term, you say. You can't have more than two out-of-town permits or whatever, like, I'm just making that up. I know we got it on Saturday or Sunday, and you have to, you know, be priority resident. There'd be a way to do it even longer-term, I think.
I would also anticipate, though, that the publicity shouldn't have any change, the rooftop is basically what's spread online. So people who are, people who are invested, let's say we want the park open, you know, the brick Matheson Park, they're going to get the work done big time.
Yeah.
So it's not just something that we're going to be able to keep to ourselves.
And I do think
That's just, we shouldn't do it, but let's not assume that we'll just take down the sign and nobody will notice.
I also think, and I'd ask with all due respect, that you give RPAC an opportunity to give you, you know, their thoughts and their feelings on it, so.
I'm going to offer it to them.
Well, the reason we told the public meetings that we didn't want to waste time in the meetings to focus on this is because ultimately the decision was the board's. And we explained that when that time came, everyone would have their opportunity to say the pros and cons to it. So, you know, we've not spent any time on it because we've had too many other things to spend to work on. But I really, yeah
It sounds like another report.
I just, I just think that, you know, there's some stuff that has to get considered on your end before you make that final decision. Or at least give us a little time to prepare. Unless you're going to take something away from us. You can have the Pollinator Hotel if you want.
Hotel times on that, that's all.
By the way, that was a lot of fun.
Well, I think they're, they want to deal with the questions, so as soon as you can get back something from RPAC.
Again, I'm in the middle of starting to camp.
No, I'm not saying now, I'm just saying, they're ready, anytime.
Well, I mean, if you give me, if you plan, if you give me an idea of when you want to put this out, you know, I have a meeting with RPAC next week, I could let them know that
Let them know next week.
That you're thinking about this.
It might be on the August calendar, which I believe that you take through the whole season just about, so you can have a whole year to plan for any changes that
Well, in fact, the point you said is what I've been looking at, especially because if you approve the playground, we may be starting to do some work this fall. It might make more sense that, you know, we ease the rules, we allow more people in, which, again, there's no gate attendants, so how do we keep them out anyway? But as far as, you know, group permits and bigger events, you know, moving to next spring to be ready for that, that doesn't mean you couldn't let people in.
I think changing the sign, like you said
I think change the sign is the easiest start. And we've thought about that, we tried to find better words to put in, but again, in respect to RPAC, I, you know, I promise them when you guys tell me it's time, they'll have an opportunity, and I can make that happen start next week.
I think there's a place, what did I see? Oh, where you go on a riverwalk behind Lyndhurst, I was going to take a picture of it. There's a sign there, I'm going to see if, something struck me, it's like, this is really nice, the way they said this. It's when you, you're walking on river, you go through the back of Lyndhurst, and you start on that little park that goes to Tarrytown.
Let me just give you an example of just something you have to think about. The assumption I would make is if you're going to ease your rules about who goes in, that doesn't just mean for a Matheson, you're going to change it for Halsey Pond, and you're going to change it for Memorial Park. So let's assume that's part of the package. Now you've done it at Memorial Park, I can't get residents on the tennis courts now. Time has to be given and thought about as how do we make sure residents don't have to wait behind ten sets of non-residents who are looking to play. You know there's a tennis court shortage in this area on the River Town.
We could potentially have tennis courts, I mean, I
Every time has residents only.
Yeah, that residents only.
That's my point of an example of where there might need to be some special considerations given.
Right.
The tennis courts are the one that jumps out before anything.
We've handled, we've handled Cedar Hudson Park that way, not exactly that way. We've handled, it's always been residents first
Correct.
For the facilities at Cedar Hudson Park.
Right, but it's very different on an hourly basis when
Yeah, no, it's
For the attendant over the tennis courts.
Yeah, especially with some
We do, we do spot check the tennis courts. We have to, because we get so many complaints from residents, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's unusual for a, for a facility like that, that's in high demand
Yeah.
To restrict it to residents only, that's not that unusual.
And that's just an example of one.
But to go, to go push someone off a swing because they're not a resident, that's a different story.
We have a special guy in the department who's assigned to that, so.
Will you hire me in the police department?
I wasn't going to say. Thank you, everybody, and thank you.
RPACs that are coming up for proposing
Yeah, I'll, I'll text Rick now, and we'll make sure it's on the agenda for next week.
Perfect.
Thanks, Joe.
Fund analysis.
All right, I'll try, I'll try to whirl through these next two topics quickly, so don't lose your attention.
Too late.
Okay, so, so as of right now, there's, you're probably aware, there are two funds that currently have deficits. They have deficits for different reasons, but the water fund has had a deficit for many years. The deficit is considerably smaller because of your efforts to maintain water rates and, you know, build in cushions in the budget and try to work that deficit off. The cable TV fund is a whole different story, it's a very relatively minor deficit that has to do with a timing between capital, capital expenditures that were made to build, to do work in the schools, and receipt of those revenues from the cable companies. So it's just a timing thing, and it all was going to even out soon enough. What we're proposing here is that, is really two things. It's a comment that our auditors have made for a few years, it's also a comment that we get from the bond rating companies or company that we deal with, Moody's, that they often, they often hold this deficit against us, especially in the Water Department. The cable TV they don't care about, but the Water Fund, you know, they do see that as a concern. Of course, it was a bigger concern in the past, and it was a more legitimate one. So at this
Can you move over?
Yeah, so, I mean, at this point, and the point of this schedule is, if you look at the top part of the schedule, in the general fund, we have a pretty healthy unassigned fund balance. From a policy standpoint, we don't have a formal adopted policy in terms of how much we carry for fund balance. You typically measure your level of fund balance versus what your total budget is, so you look at it as a percentage. We've, over the years, we've set ten to fifteen percent. We probably have been operating more like it's a fifteen to twenty percent percentage. And right now, right now, we're at almost, well, we would expect to be at about twenty-six percent, so, healthy. And we've been using that fund balance each year. Some of the capital projects that you just looked at, some of those are being funded not with debt, but with some fund balance, in order to keep using this, but, so we're in a healthy position from a fund balance standpoint. So we feel that the time is right now to essentially absorb and make up for those deficits, again, mainly the Water Fund is the one we're looking at, to make up for those deficits and establish the Water Fund with a very small fund balance going forward, that they can, the Water Fund can build on going forward, but at least it'll be back into the positive.
Still keep us at twenty-three percent.
That's my point, yeah, and that's, and that's why we laid it out this way, so it's a little bit
And the state is less likely to be angry with us, so.
Yeah, the state would actually come in, if we had a, an audit, which we haven't had for a few years, and they saw that we had consistently had fund balance levels of twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent, we'd probably get a comment on that, because there's a point where you need to return that to the taxpayers. No one's, no one's denying that. And like I said No one's denying that, and like I said, we've been doing it in a very controlled way. Probably needs to be a little done a little bit more, so. But this would bring down that level back to a more normal range, in fact, still a little bit high, which is fine.
So, you're allowed to do that, I assume?
Yeah, we're gonna need a.
This fund and that fund, we keep them separate?
Yeah, when the numbers are much bigger, so back in, you know, ten years ago, when the numbers were, you know, one point one million, one point three million, when the deficit was very large in the water fund, you wouldn't typically look to the general fund to make that up, because they are actually different people paying. I know most of the people are the same, but not all. So, if you're making up shortages in your water usage with tax revenue, it gets a little bit murky. Not saying you can still do it, but you have to be able to answer to your taxpayers, you know what I mean? And, you know, how come we had to make up for the rate payers that some of them don't live in town? Some of them are renters that are already paying essentially taxes through their rent, you know what I mean? So, there's a lot of murkiness when you do that. With numbers like this, which are relatively small, you really don't have that issue, and that's why we felt that now was the good time to consider this. We have a bond issue coming up, right, so Moody's is gonna be rating us in the next, you know, three or four months in leading up to the bond issue, and this will look a lot better, and our auditors will be happy as well.
Is that some state agency that says that's not a good idea to move it? It's that the citizens might object?
Yeah, it's.
Philosophical?
It's, yes, it's a philosophical discussion, and it's, again, it's, if you're gonna constantly, the reason you have user charges is so that the users pay for what they use. If you're gonna constantly make that up with tax revenue, then you've defeated the purpose. That's the point.
So, if it's four hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
We get diligent in getting that down and.
Yes, it's come down, yes, absolutely. And there's no question that this, what I'll call small residual, is, is, it's nothing that would even move a blip on a radar screen, you know what I mean? In comparison to if you just went back, again.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, in terms of that relationship between subsidizing your water rates, I don't think anyone will say that you've subsidized water rates with taxes at this point, you know what I mean? These are just longstanding deficits that are just, it's appropriate to get them off the books at some point.
A question.
Makes sense? Yeah.
Cable TV fund was at eight K. Are we expecting money back from the cable and Verizon and whatever.
Yeah.
Altice is called now.
Yeah, Altice, yes, Altice, yeah, so it's, actually, Altice is paid up through the end of their agreement. They were accelerated, if I recall correctly. We are still receiving money from Verizon, and that money would serve to make up that deficit essentially. You know, but again, that's not gonna happen for another probably five years or so, and so with the magnitude of it, it just makes sense to close it out.
No, it's just gonna trickle in, is what I was gonna say.
And actually.
Is it like receivable, so when that comes in, it doesn't just go back to the cable TV fund or?
Well, the cable TV fund's not gonna exist, so we're gonna.
It's gonna come into the general pot.
Yes.
So, this will zero it out.
But that's okay with Verizon or whoever, like, they don't have to have it go into a separate?
No, it doesn't have to. The money, the purpose of the cable TV fund to begin with was to make sure that money that came from the cable companies for public education, public access, that it was used for capital purposes only and not to offset salaries and all that. So, the easier way to handle that was by establishing this fund.
Absolutely, so that considers mail.
Those monies have all been spent, and they've been spent on capital purposes. It was through the inter-municipal agreement we had with the school that those were spent.
So, the future money coming in from any of those service providers, doesn't have to be used for capital purposes?
No, it already has.
That's why we have the deficit, which we spent it for the studio before we got it.
We paid it upfront.
Exactly, so I get that, but so, let's just say in two years, we signed another ten-year deal with Altice.
Yeah.
Is that money that earmarked for capital purposes?
Yes, but we're gonna try to earmark it a different way, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure what the future of peg monies is gonna be.
I agree, I agree, but I'm just saying.
But yes, the answer is yes.
So, I think, yeah, so what I'm saying is if we, I think it's fine.
Yeah, we're. Setting up the cable TV fund was not the only way to deal with it at the time. It's the way we dealt with it at the time, but it wasn't the only way. We can keep track of things separately within the general fund and still have the records to show that we've spent it on capital and not salaries or anything else, or tax reduction or something like that.
I think, first, speaking for myself, I think I'm pretty happy with this approach and all this. I'd say that one thing I'd ask if we could do is have our audit partner just. That's a, that's a, she already said something, okay.
No, no, I.
She's the one.
She's the one that.
Oh, okay. She's, well, her comments were encouraging the elimination of this deficit.
That's what I'm saying. I just, we're gonna say it actually.
I don't want her to come in here and say, well, you wanna hear everything this year, then I have to give you a fine penalty.
I spoke to her today, actually, and she said, thank you. Well, I think, I, so I'm, we're gonna be presenting this tonight to the board.
There you go.
All right.
I'm okay with it.
Perfect.
And she was on the accounting aspect, and she says, it was fine.
Right, great.
So, how would this resolution come up? This is not capital budget, this is just a.
No, it'll be a standalone, yeah, standalone resolution. I thought to craft it, actually, but yes.
Transfers from the surplus, basically.
Yeah, it'll be, the cable TV one will be a larger resolution to, basically, to decommission the fund, you know what I mean? So, plus the final numbers could be slightly different. We'll have to.
Well, yeah, no, they were a little early.
You're just wrapping up the year, but we'll come up with wording to figure it out.
How to be moving.
Meeting, or we can have a special meeting for that.
Yeah.
Waiting for the numbers, whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
So, I don't have an extra nine dollars left to be in.
Yeah, no, no, the cable TV, I can, we can come up with wording. We can come up with wording about any other residual, yeah, yeah. I already have the wording going on.
Also, do you have LP bars?
No.
Update on TV charging station.
Okay, so just a brief update, and I know Mark was in on some of the emails that have been going back and forth, but basically, I, there, I was waiting for information from relating to the installation charges, installation cost, installation costs for these units. The idea is to, there were four separate locations identified. I have really narrowed it down to two at this point because of the dollars that are involved. But I'll give you the four locations, and if you have any different opinion, that's fine, but. But it's the Aqueduct parking lot, the southern end of the library parking lot, so closest to the DPW, Cedar Hudson Park, essentially right in the middle where the storage building is, and this one is, was even further out as a possibility, but the possibility of somehow an arrangement to rent or lease parking spaces from Bazaar that could be used during off-hours, and we thought of a charging station there. That's the one that certainly we're not exploring at this point, because there's just too many moving parts with that. Doesn't mean it can't be looked at in the future, but at this point, we're looking really just at the library lot and the Aqueduct lot.
Is there a problem with the library lot at some point in the past?
The library, the original location was in front of the building, so it was closest to the electric inside the building, and that was the problem. The southern end of the parking lot closest to DPW is probably far less in demand in terms of their concerns, but we'll certainly clear all that, but just trying to get the groundwork done on the numbers.
The assumption is that people would be parked overnight there or left for charging, or. I don't know what, how much extra versus the current apartment people need for parking.
I don't know, this is on the library side of the lot, not the housing side.
Oh, okay.
Right, so it's not for people parked overnight.
So, it shouldn't have.
How long does it take to charge a car?
Well, two to six hours depending.
Oh, okay, I just had no idea it needed to be overnight, but so it can be considerably shorter.
Right.
And there's, if I understand, there's also two different types of chargers, there's like the, one of the like the leaf and the those, and then there's the Tesla one.
Well, Tesla has their own stations.
These are not, these are not.
These are the other.
These are not Tesla's.
There's also two different levels of charging, faster and slower charging.
These are level-two chargers, I believe.
That would be the faster charging.
Right.
You can also do myself on those.
Sure. If it's plugged into your, if it's plugged into your electric vehicle, sure.
All right, so what's the end?
So, all right, so the end game is that there's, so the units that we're looking at have two separate heads on them, so they would take up two spots that could be charged, two vehicles at a time. There's a rebate available through NYSERTA of four thousand dollars per head, so eight thousand dollars. Eight thousand per location, right. The installation is, the numbers that we got back from the contractor that's affiliated with the electric vehicle charging equipment provider were astronomical. So, we've, Greg's looked at it, he's talked with our excavation contractor, he's getting to talk to our electrician, still gathering some numbers, but we think we can do it for probably half or a little bit more than half of what was suggested by the other contractor. So, I mean, the other contractor was like twenty-nine thousand dollars for installation at one location. And again, it's running the power to the location, that's the problem.
So, the thirty thousand is the half price?
Yeah, I mean, as of now, that's what the estimate is.
That's just, yeah, okay, yeah.
So, yeah, so that's it. Now, the only question, and I don't know that I have enough information for you to make a full decision on, but there is a question ahead of time of whether this is being, whether you are charging for use or not charging for, I'm sorry, whether people are paying for use.
Paying to charge.
Paying to charge or not paying to charge.
Is that the municipality's discretion or?
Yes, it's actually on the grant application.
So, how does that work?
But we have no way of being reimbursed if we don't charge.
Correct.
So, how does it work if they are, is there like a different unit where they put like your credit cards on here?
I think it's typically an app.
It's the same unit. Over, I'm only saying it from experience, because over in Terry, over in NIAC, they have, it looks like you gotta pay, but when you go to pay, and you do the app and everything, and you go to pay, it's like, it's free, there's no charge for the charging, but you don't know that until.
So, it's all through an app, so that would be.
That's what I understand, yeah, but I don't, honestly, haven't focused on that just yet.
And I'm sure we can figure out the approximate cost.
Right.
And this is EV Connect, right, is that?
Yes.
So, would it be like paying by the hour, so of course, I have different times? I think it makes sense, if for no other reason, then that will eliminate some of the complaints that somebody's hopping charger, you know, that the same car's parked there all the time is, at least everybody who uses it is paying the same for the use of it.
Right.
Your only charge, your only paying, though, while the charging's happening, once the car shuts off.
Then you're just parked.
Then you're started. You should move, that's someone else. It doesn't work, you send you out, or you can check your status, so you can get a text message that says your car's charged.
Car is stopped, and you go get your car.
Do not disturb.
They need to do the parking, for the trainer, yeah, yeah.
I can see you park there at the turn.
So, yeah, I mean, so that's where it's at, I. I'm still waiting for the estimates from the electrician, actually, as well, you know, they just got the information, so we're working on that side of it. I've got the grant application, kind of, we've been pre-approved to apply, so I have the grant application kind of drafted up, I just have to wait for the final.
So, the hens are not at risk, I mean, the reimbursement for the hens?
It's, oh, it said, when I put in, when I put in the model that we were looking at, it said, it said the reimbursement amount was eight thousand dollars, so.
But it's not like the.
They're not just reimbursing.
The kitty runs out at some point.
Well, it does, yeah, there's, you mean, the amount of funding that's available? Yeah, in fact, NYSERTA has a gauge on their website that shows you how much is left, and it's about fifty percent.
We have time.
We have time, but I wanna, I.
So, are we being asked again by residents? When are we gonna have this?
Yeah.
Before the pledge wraps?
No, I think, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's possible.
Diligently working on.
Yeah, I think it's possible by the end of the summer, you know.
Especially if things go well, I think the electricians come back and say it's not bad, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and there are people, it's not, you know what I mean, so.
I almost think that we lean towards, on the, on the.
Payment?
Yeah, the payment thing, I lean towards no, so maybe free. But I think, before I say that, I'd like to know how much it'll cost.
Let me tell you, charging a car probably is about, like, my friend's car, which is only, like, you know, thirty miles a battery, is less than two dollars, so someone that's, when you charge it something like a leaf or something, I bet you it's gonna be.
Ten bucks?
It's certainly gonna be under ten bucks, it's gonna be like in the five to.
We can try to find out how much.
Yeah, I could ask for.
I again. You don't have Peter.
Four heads, times five a day, times three hundred.
Gets very.
Three times, we're talking about thousands of dollars.
I'll find out more information. I said in the beginning I didn't have all this.
I think the effect of getting people to move it might be the more important thing. Yes, to think that people just stay there and don't move their car, it might be worth it to turn to just leave your car there.
I'll get some more information.
Maybe it doesn't work that way, but it seems like.
I've been focused on the installation part of it, but the question came up, but the question came up during the application with NYSERTA, so I thought I'd at least, I will have to answer it sooner rather than later, so, but I'll get some more information.
So, what is the question, whether or not we want to charge, if we don't charge, how much is it taking us?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think asking the NIAC guy, administrator?
I'll get, I'll get information from EV Connect, they'll give me a hand with that.
Yeah, great.
So, and I may even, Rich Slenderland may have some information from up in Tarrytown, so I'll find out. Yes.
Not yet, we should do a jury if I get a sec.